I'd like to call the media recorder. Let's start with the legislature.
The legislature is in the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for whose end is our nation, our government, and individual liberty and justice for all.
Got them here.
Ms. Conover.
President.
Mr. Whitman.
Louie Lee.
Mr. Poprod. Mr. Beig. Here. Mr. Reeves. Mr. Flaherty. Ms. Graham.
Yes.
And the President, Governor.
Okay, I'd ask for you to approve the minutes that came through for 2014. Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
First reading.
The following appropriations coming forward this year, considerations to saving for our county soil, water, 1034, 25534, 2146. Quarter counties three report 1,000, 1082, 1110, 82 salaries, 11,979 dollars. For the quarter county two bridge fund, $75,000. For the quarter county reporter perpetuation fund, $8700. For the quarter county public defender supplemental fund, $10,000. We hold the non-reverting fund consideration on the agenda. So, quarter county doo's, Kankakee grant, $35,000. The Lake Michigan Coastal grant, $58,700. And reduction of quarter county general fund to commissioners, 1,000, 1030, 2110, office supplies, 2146.
Okay, any questions?
I'm ready to move to a question.
Is that it? Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, complaints, the payment of benefits family express corporation. Mrs. Marie Horn. Marie Horn. And, uh, I'm not sure if they're... Any day, everyone have a chance to review?
Why don't we explain a little bit why you're here and what your...
This is our last year. We have compliance with our statements, and we have reached an open discussion. And we've been able to see what we need to say, when we jobs created, and what the particular issues are. More than that, what we've already did.
Terms of the...
Exactly, which was the original, uh, statement.
In what years is this big thing?
This is...
How long has it been before?
I believe it's...
Could be almost prime signal.
Oh, they've been good too. They've been good corporate drivers, and, um, we've seen...
What'd you do?
All in favor? Any opposed?
None.
Okay. All right, we're going to, um, have Northern Indiana, Ohio Passage Rail Co., divert from the budget, I mean, okay, a little bit. I may hear you. I don't get how, okay. All right, when they come in, I'll take them a little out of order. Okay, team bridge. Additional.
Presenting you tonight, $75,000 for our payroll. Because of the implementation of the gateway system, the past chief of staff of the auditor's office decided to make some changes. We used to make the payroll out of MBH or the bridge account, so they did their work, and then we would reimburse the bridge account, or we would reimburse the MBH account through the bridge, through paperwork, through the auditor's office. Couple of years ago, they decided that maybe the auditor's just set up a bridge with their own payroll. Well, because we haven't been able to get the proper paperwork, as far as monthly budgets, we were requested to add more money to this line item, and we didn't know it was running dry. And we've been putting in several bridges, as you folks know, and within five, we just finished the fifth one last week. So, it's been, you know, it's easier in the long run, but we weren't able to follow the close to what we used to, so we're requesting additional to the payroll. We have another bridge yet, but we're gonna start August 11th. And it's running about $37,000, $38,000 for each bridge labor-wise. Hopefully, and then we've also got the maintenance that we gotta do, 127. So, we're coming to you tonight, requesting this additional, please, if you would.
Move it. Second. If there's additional, we'll tell them. Roll call, both please.
Very good. Mr. Poprod?
Yes.
Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Boy, Sarah, you probably...
Thank you very much. Also, on a side note, as you know, Al is retiring, and his last day will be August 14th. There's been an invitation presented to your office for you to attend the luncheon, if you would please, and have the time to wish him well. I'll miss you. But you're all welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, and good night.
Okay, commissioners, 1,000, 1030 dash 30. Reduction of appropriation to cover additional for soil and water, $2,146 from 2110, office supplies. All right. Second. I'd like to combine the next...
Yeah, I'll make sure through the second additional, uh, alter.
Right.
It's just, let's record shortly. He said additions are not coming out of the journal.
That is correct, yes. Okay, roll call, both please.
Very good. Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Boy, Sarah, you probably...
Thank you very much. Also, on a side note, as you know, Al is retiring, and his last day will be August 14th. There's been an invitation presented to your office for you to attend the luncheon, if you would please, and have the time to wish him well. I'll miss you. But you're all welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, and good night.
Okay, commissioners, 1,000, 1030 dash 30. Reduction of appropriation to cover additional for soil and water, $2,146 from 2110, office supplies. All right. Second. I'd like to combine the next...
Yeah, I'll make sure through the second additional, uh, alter.
Right.
It's just, let's record shortly. He said additions are not coming out of the journal.
That is correct, yes. Okay, roll call, both please.
Very good. Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Poprod?
Yes.
Boy, Sarah, you probably...
Thank you very much. Also, on a side note, as you know, Al is retiring, and his last day will be August 14th. There's been an invitation presented to your office for you to attend the luncheon, if you would please, and have the time to wish him well. I'll miss you. But you're all welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, and good night.
Okay, commissioners, 1,000, 1030 dash 30. Reduction of appropriation to cover additional for soil and water, $2,146 from 2110, office supplies. All right. Second. I'd like to combine the next...
Yeah, I'll make sure through the second additional, uh, alter.
Right.
It's just, let's record shortly. He said additions are not coming out of the journal.
That is correct, yes. Okay, roll call, both please.
Very good. Mr. Poprod?
Yes.
Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Boy, Sarah, you probably...
Thank you very much. Also, on a side note, as you know, Al is retiring, and his last day will be August 14th. There's been an invitation presented to your office for you to attend the luncheon, if you would please, and have the time to wish him well. I'll miss you. But you're all welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, and good night.
Okay, commissioners, 1,000, 1030 dash 30. Reduction of appropriation to cover additional for soil and water, $2,146 from 2110, office supplies. All right. Second. I'd like to combine the next...
Yeah, I'll make sure through the second additional, uh, alter.
Right.
It's just, let's record shortly. He said additions are not coming out of the journal.
That is correct, yes. Okay, roll call, both please.
Very good. Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Boy, Sarah, you probably...
Thank you very much. Also, on a side note, as you know, Al is retiring, and his last day will be August 14th. There's been an invitation presented to your office for you to attend the luncheon, if you would please, and have the time to wish him well. I'll miss you. But you're all welcome.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, and good night.
Okay, commissioners, 1,000, 1030 dash 30. Reduction of appropriation to cover additional for soil and water, $2,146 from 2110, office supplies. All right. Second. I'd like to combine the next...
Yeah, I'll make sure through the second additional, uh, alter.
Right.
It's just, let's record shortly. He said additions are not coming out of the journal.
That is correct, yes. Okay, roll call, both please.
Very good. Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Boy, Sarah, you probably...
Thank you very much. All right, going out of order a little bit, um, until our president get here. Dunes, Kankakee grant. Fund number 8148, zero 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 zero, dash 24, additional. And the reason, Dunes, Kankakee Trail Construction Inspection. Yes, I can handle that. So, explanation, I can explain.
Second.
Yeah, my... We're quite latest in a project that started back in 2009. Commissioner Herbert asked me to fly for a grant, I did. We had a special appropriation for this project, and what we're trying to do is now finish up this particular fund that we're drawing the money from, is to inform the municipal community, to the district, and to the state, and to the state's staff, and to the state's staff, and to the appropriation. Hopefully, this is finished.
And where are you requesting the appropriation from?
The ordinance fund.
Which is meant to that purpose?
Correct. It's federal money.
Senator, motion?
Yeah.
All the questions?
Do a roll call.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Poprod?
Yes.
Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Five zero, the purpose.
Very good.
All right, public defender supplemental, 1200, dash 0000, dash 78, additional, 10,231, 10 legal, additional money needed in account. Judge McCann, how are you?
I've not been part of her, but she's at a conference, so she asked me to stay. I'm the latest judge in the public, so I can answer any questions you have.
You guys have, uh, seen the request? You have any questions about it?
Please.
The motion?
Thank you.
And second discussion? Your time? Do a roll call.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Poprod?
Yes.
Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Five zero, the purpose.
Thank you very much. Uh, Spirit Court, one, 144, legal assistance, reserve, 31,000. And there's additional, 11,979 to 1110 salaries due to increase in workload, the retirement of the stray staff, the additional full-time legal assistance that will be foregoing, leaving any further part-time money position to start obviously by 2015. To speak with the director about this, and certainly have some extraordinary things that are happening, I think the court there entirely actually has been running, one staff fewer than other courts, so I personally didn't see a problem with this, and of course, roll. Wait for motion, and then motion. Second for discussion.
I've been struggling with any of those points, and I know that our courts do not come through with hurdles, requests, and we all run support with minimal strength. And you all work very hard, and to me, to not do this might be, what if you're in court in jeopardy, managing public safety, and it's your mind, and, uh, I'm...
Yes, you're doing it, yes.
I'm definitely. I've been struggling with this all weekend, because it's just against policy. You have a unique circumstance.
Very recognized, and I hope you all met the letter of the explanation that I sent you, but this wasn't something that I did lightly.
And we, and I can say, and I swear to the judge, a little bit about this, you know, we really don't want to be adding people doing this kind of stuff outside of time, however, we really have a very unusual circumstance, and we have to be cautious, and we're not forced to, I guess.
Okay. We've all been restrained, and I am, uh, these people that are retiring?
Yes.
That's, um, how long have they been, have you known that people retire?
Um, probably a month, or just a few weeks.
Oh, that's long.
Yeah, well, they started planning their retirement for the end of the year, and found out the change in course that goes in with that September 1st, and it would have lost them to down substantial money if they stayed fully under the...
Okay. And do you have a place for this business?
Yes. Yes, all of the, the part-time person that we have, and...
You have a station there?
Yes, yes. The part-time person stays, and will become full-time. And I will not use any more of the part-time money in my budget after all this eighteen. I may not feel a lot left there, I can tell.
The changing of the posts and everything with the states, that has to be a monumental task, and if you add your existing...
It's gonna be a rest of the world, of course, and one small thing on the right side would be, if we use the experience these walls, yeah, to save $6,000, then we'll be able to pay.
Yeah, it is what it is. Any other questions or discussion? We have a motion, a second, I'm sorry. And I assume the motion is for 144, additional?
Yeah, I'll make that.
Second, first, I assume? Uh, you with me? Uh, let's get a roll call.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Poprod?
Yes.
Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Five zero, the purpose.
Wonderful, yes.
Now you know how sometimes people... Uh, public defender, 1,000, dash 1084, dash 84, 144, four, uh, to deputy 54, 44, 54, 545, to two deputies, 27, 272, deputy 47, 045, to 2747.
Please approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
And second, questions or discussion? We just split this into...
Yes.
Taking the one salary and making it two employees with an salary.
Yes, of course.
Uh, as I mentioned, uh, any discussion? Here, now, let's get a roll call.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Poprod?
Yes.
Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Five zero, the purpose.
Very good.
Dunes, uh, Kankakee grant, additional $35,000 to 3120 consultants for dunes, Kankakee Trail Construction Inspection, we just saw a grant, right, how'd it go?
Good.
Lake Michigan Coastal Fund, can we do that again?
No.
58, 700, 3950, contractual, reimbursable grant for restoration and rehabilitation of pond, incredibly, and sun, sand, and... Guys, how are you? You have a motion?
I made the motion.
Well, did you ever say? Wait, outside. We have a couple of motions to dissent.
I did.
That's okay. What are you talking about? Put on your, your, your... Um, so, uh, any discussion or questions on this?
Yeah, I just like to ask, how is it going?
Very well. The project has started, you've got a little bit of issues, you've got a non-English machine that's stalled, a little, uh, possibly burned, it's starting to...
How deep is the time?
Uh...
Okay, so you're not gonna, uh, take the day from the time, as far as that?
No, no, so are the water conservation district, uh, partner in this, starting this , uh, really, from, uh, so...
We would totally deepen up the fish.
Yeah, we might be able to spot it, uh, yeah, but not a little bit, uh, probably like some shallow. But, yeah, both of the projects is...
Turtles and bras.
Turtles, bras, crayfish, leeches.
All good snakes.
All good, good rink. All good stuff. Very much so. All right, very good. Thanks, please. Counselor.
I think we're...
We, uh, we're... Roll call, please.
Mr. Whitman?
Yes.
Mr. Poprod?
Yes.
Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Boy, Sarah, you probably...
I guess, uh, yeah, I get it from the fact. Just a reminder, Saturday, where you go to Fair, and it's a free, uh, celebration, celebrating the anniversary, uh, artists, free, and, uh, dancing, and we'll start afterwards. Yeah, I think my wife's fairly... Anybody watch, come and play, we're playing a vintage baseball game, and you...
Are you playing football?
No, it's, uh, it's three, it's three, it's not good. No stealing, no spitting, no swearing. I'm out. Recorder perpetuation, additional, 7200, 4510, data processing, 1544, 40 furniture fixtures over 100, installation, additional workstation, and desk, and... How are you? It's a pleasure. Second. We have a motion in a couple of seconds, questions? Here, now, roll call.
Uh, Mr. Poprod?
Yes.
Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Boy, Sarah, you probably...
Auto non-reverting fund request been withdrawn. All right, uh, second reading, please.
The following, can we agree, consideration for this evening, quarter county general fund, $14,000, or $25,000. Quarter county team of bridge fund, $75,000. Quarter county reporter perpetuation fund, $8,700. Quarter county public defender supplemental fund, $10,000. Quarter county, uh, Dunes, Kankakee grant, $35,000. Lake Michigan Coastal grant, $58,700. And the quarter county commissioners, over nothing, $140,000.
It's a pleasure. Motion, second. Motion, second. Roll call.
Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Boy, Sarah, you probably...
Thank you very much. Okay, commissioners, 1,000, 1030 dash 30. Reduction of appropriation to cover additional for soil and water, $2,146 from 2110, office supplies. All right. Second. We have a motion in a couple of seconds, questions? Here, now, roll call.
Uh, Mr. Poprod?
Yes.
Mr. Beig?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Boy, Sarah, you probably...
Thank you very much. All right, you guys have any questions, or are it turn? Good. Enactment of IC 522175 regarding print shop equipment share and license. Oh, Sharon, how are you? Let me just...
I don't know if you had a chance to look at the IC code, or if you're familiar with it at all, or anything, or if you'd like to leave some background, or...
I would appreciate it.
Okay, um, I see by initially, two, dash 175, is the code that basically states that when the physical body determines that there are either coves not appropriated or unavailable, that any contract that has been signed by a county can be cleared or voided. Um, I am asking to enact the, on the contract, that was used to purchase equipment for print shops. Um, when equipment is purchased through the state TPA agreement, there are specific rules and requirements of a vendor to be on the TPA, and one of those requirements is that they understand that this IC code could be enacted upon them, and they choose to take the right side being selected to be on the TPA. Um, so, we've found the machines purchased through the state TPA, there is a contract that states that there is not appropriation, and that, um, the clause, um, that you enact any time, the physical body has to determine that, um, and therefore, it's not... The reason I am asking for it is because the equipment that we have, which is very quickly outdated, needs to be replaced. Um, the amount of money that was spent on it is very high, and it was really on the services that I spend, and the team supported, the manufacturer was drawn, uh, production of it, and also was drawn in question, of course, but keep it there, but they can't serve the equipment anyway. Um, to pay out the contract, it'd be quite difficult, and in trying to, well, to save the money, I've been looking at what the print shop costs, and what vendors they have, and, uh, we are seeing significant savings, like in the house, even with this existing contract, if we were able to replace the equipment, if we were to spend the equipment, and, uh, the figure that I just came up with is, is the equipment, uh, by non-funding this contract, and then replacing the equipment with new equipment, would save $30,000 a year, and that's the rest money that can be reduced, I was a commissioner, and it's in the line, and that's what, uh, the project, the project, they have been working with, they support the, um, according to the, uh, for, uh, and they take the, this body to determine that they want, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the question, uh, the, 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 uh,
Can we agree to an agreement for this evening? Porter County General Fund, fourteen thousand or twenty-five dollars. Porter County Children's Bridge Fund, seventy-five thousand dollars. Porter County Resort and Graduation Fund, eight thousand seven hundred dollars. Porter County Public Fund, supplemental fund, ten thousand dollars. Porter County, uh, students, can you keep grant thirty-five thousand dollars? Lake Michigan Postal Grant, fifty-eight thousand seven hundred dollars. And the Porter County Commissioners, over nothing but one hundred and forty-two dollars.
Which plan is that?
Uh.
What's in the second? Pro call.
Mr. Vegas?
Yes.
Ms. Graham?
Yeah.
Ms. Tomover?
Yeah.
Mr. Witt?
Yes.
Mr. Poplar?
Yes.
Five zero, need purpose.
Scott, you have any thoughts?
Everything I had talked about last night.
Enactment of IC, you guys have any questions or are it current? Good. Enactment of IC, five point two seventeen five regarding print shop equipment here in my... Oh, Sharon, how are you? Do we just move?
Um, I don't know if you had a chance to look at the IC code or if you're familiar with it at all or anything or do you like to leave some background or...
I would appreciate it.
Okay, um, I see by initially the two that's on the next slide is that shows that when the body determines that there are either coves not appropriated or unavailable, that any contract that has been signed by a county can be cleared or voided. Um, I am asking to enact the on the contract that was used to purchase equipment for print shops. Um, when equipment is purchased through the state TPA agreement, there are specific rules requirement of a vendor to be on the TPA. And one of those requirements is that they understand that this IC code could be enacted upon them and they choose to take the right side being selected to be on the TPA. Um, so we've found the machines purchased through the state TPA, the original contract, that states that there is not appropriation from vendors across, um, and at any time the body has to determine that, um, and therefore it's not possible. The reason I'm asking for it is because the equipment that we have is very quickly upgraded, needs to be replaced. Um, the amount of money that was spent on it was very high and it was really on the surface of the budget that the team supported, the manufacturer was wrong, uh, production of it also was also was wrong in terms of parts, but given their, they can't certainly get it anyway. Um, to pay out the contract, it'd be quite difficult. And in trying to really save the money, I've been looking at what the print shop costs and what benefits they have, which is really outside of print shop, well, we are seeing significant savings by giving it out even with this existing contract. If we were able to replace the equipment, if we were to spend the equipment, the, uh, the figure that I just came up with is to put in, uh, by non-funding this contract and then replacing the equipment with new equipment would save thirty thousand dollars. And that's the rest money that can be reduced by the commissioners who are in the line of the, that's what the contract is, uh, for shop and, uh, they have been working with the state to support the, um, to support me through the ask for support, uh, and their case with this body to determine that they want to be part of the store, um, in terms of whether...
Scott, I checked, what we have to do here?
I need to make a motion that the body finds that, uh, the funds are not available for the contracts, which supply, let alone our minutes, contracts canceled in light of much discussed questions and more, uh, short, uh, budget, it's pretty clear that... I mean, it's said this, we've talked a little bit about this, uh, in the last couple of weeks, and so I think we're fully within our right, if you agree with the statute.
Perfect, I get a motion to that, that?
Right.
You have seven?
Seven.
Seven.
I just have one more thing to indicate. Um, I have spoken to the financial company that holds the need for both the financial obligation on this, they are also significantly aware of this agreement. They actually said they would expect a letter just from me, from their supervisor, and it was two weeks until the equipment was done. So they are fully aware and not frightened of this. They also stated that enactment of the IC code did not generate any negative credit authority or anything of that sort to the county, so there would be no negative repercussions to interpret it.
Perfect. Any other questions? I just have a roll call.
Ms. Graham?
Yeah.
Ms. Tomover?
Yeah.
Mr. Witt?
Yeah.
Mr. Poplar?
Yes.
Mr. Vegas?
Yes.
Five zero, need purpose.
Anything else?
Uh, Northern Indiana, Ohio Passage Rail Corridor study presentation. Long way to presentation.
Thank you.
Take one, guys. Scared? All right, tell them.
Thanks, sir. I'm Fred Lanahan, I'm president of the Passage Rail Association. And tonight I wanted to speak to you and ask your support for restoration of passenger rail services in Chicago, Gary, Valparaiso, Culver County, Plymouth, also Fort Wayne, and Monterey, Ohio, two points, Ohio, four points. We'd like to talk a little bit in terms of the three hundred mile service and restoration service and talking about, uh, in this area, we've already spoken with the community, we've also had a present issue with Apple, Valparaiso, State Council. We have also provided to all the other cities that, uh, we've come to ask for your support and choose to restore and invest passenger rail, passage rail expectation, transportation option, and to... We have these awards that, uh, a hundred thousand dollars into, uh, we just had a place last year, which was very, very positive business. We'd like to go over what we have to show you, and I'd posit that this, uh, can be addressed in the next few years. So, thank you.
Thank you for having us to talk to you today. I'm Tom Walz, I'm the State Department's Department of Planning and Planning. I serve on Mayor Tom Henry's staff team, this initiative, this key, I've been committed to, we are very strict in partnership with the, uh, Passage Rail Association. We have an interest, we are, we are always looking at, like, I know we're constantly, like, Fred and his group of Nippera, our guys who go very back, very far back, twenty years on how we got here to rail. And, uh, the strange thing about it is the way people, it's cut up on most people. And passenger rail is something that you need to learn about, uh, this man is Rich Bates, who is our consultant, they should show. But, uh, this did not come from any one source, uh, enabling legislation was passed by the federal government in nineteen ninety-one, signed into law by President George W. Bush. And for fifteen years, endless, endless meetings at state DOT and regional levels, we discussed potential passenger rail corridors. And, uh, Max Minter said, hazard free, interactive, for fast rail movement and transportation act, signed into law by President George W. Bush. When President Obama came along and he was looking at ideas for two things on the, uh, passenger rail, when he chose, uh, not his idea, chose to give the money, supported, and... We've been interested ever since Mayor Henry came into office in 1997, um, which is before the federal laws. We feel, um, pretty solid about the numbers and the data that you're going to look at, a summary of, uh, from Rich. The study, uh, we had mentioned was funded from the public, five dollars, uh, number of large corporations in the rating for the SBI, even to others, NIPSO, and others. Put my hand in this study because it's just that widespread growing interest. I've heard, you've heard all complaints about Amtrak, some are desecrating, some are not, separate discussion, fascinating, some time. But despite whatever its shortcomings, Amtrak ridership is soaring in the Midwest over the last fifteen years. We believe it's clearly in the favor of unmet demand. The speeds that are going to be obtained by, uh, the public corridor are, keeping the Midwest rail initiatives, not Star Trek two hundred mile an hour jet express train, they're hard performance eagles, their operating speed will be a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty miles an hour. And unless you think that is incredible, that's just a return to the past. We will, uh, be moving towards a ninety-three support. We're just, uh, there, that's where we need to be. Um, our infrastructure in the United States needs to be, uh, flexible, provide multiple modes, we get things done, uh, and it's been proven by many, many studies, not this army. Uh, by the way, what you know is the executive summary, if, if you might guess, the study is not fit. Um, other studies that they, uh, one of them by Ortorworks in Warsaw, they're, they want access to Chicago, high-speed, effective, comfortable travel. They did own set, privately owned, and, uh, everybody's, including us, keep, converge on the same general, uh, central point, that this will work the best way it's possible, public private partnership model. And, uh, in that regard, we have completed our piece of the study, and we are now working toward a tier one environmental study, which is federally required to take this to the next level. They have to sprinkle what we want to earn, they have to believe it, they have to accept their business, like. The, uh, the funding that we, I wanted to come to you about is, um, is in support of that. Uh, we've raised at this point over four hundred thousand dollars, or the total of about five hundred, five hundred and fifteen, six hundred thousand, uh, to get a matrimina to take care of our, our media side. The city Columbus is spiraling, you know, out of sight, and, uh, I'm not sure how much money you have to waste for your time, especially now, the point is there, we're getting on the out of sight. We, uh, hope that you will, uh, give consideration to what we are about to present, and we hope to answer any questions, including hard, hard, hard questions. Because that's what a tier one environmental is supposed to do, is feasibility study, initial indication, this will work. But you do the environmental, to really buy on the hard questions, uh, and there are many, infrastructure and, uh, acquisition of land and so on. So we, we're putting this before you, humbly requesting that you believe us when we're telling you about how all the larger people at professional, high thinking levels have looked at this and now support it. And, uh, we're willing to share our summary of numbers with you, we already gave you enough paper, I mean, I wasn't sure whether you'd like to see our summary of content, so we'll certainly do that if you want. So I'm going to turn this over to Richard Davis, who's our consultant, and then Rich will go through, uh, the presentation, where we're at with this and why we think it's going to work. If I may.
Thank you very much, Tom, if everybody can hear me, I'm sure it's great. We do appreciate the opportunity to, uh, come before you this evening and to present this project as has been introduced to you by Fred and by Tom, and, of course, answer any questions that you might have, pending your, uh, decision on, uh, those, uh, questions. We understand come to you from, they're kind of commissioners. Um, go ahead, first slide, I'm going to be signaling over here, so, uh, this is good, I'll play that one, it's fine. Um, current US population, three hundred and seventeen million people, it's kind of hard to imagine, uh, that number, that's not a big number, but if you imagine adding another hundred million or so people by the year twenty fifty, uh, incredible. Uh, that's almost as many people as we had in the US in the year nineteen forty. Um, we're looking at evolving travel patterns, and if you look at, by the way, this is all on the end up, we're providing you, so if you take this away, I'm leaving down, so with you, and we can send you, uh, certainly via digital files, anything that you, what you want to see more of, see. Um, so young people, uh, incredibly are, are driving less, they're putting off getting their licenses, so much later than my generation gets sure. They are using the rail and transit much more than my generation gets sure. And, uh, we know that, uh, just in terms of infrastructure, that the infrastructure that we have is badly in need of repair and upgrade. The American Society of Civil Engineers has determined that, that the current national investment of about ninety-one billion, uh, will lead inevitably to a decline of our road conditions if we don't, if we don't do better over the next ten years. This is the corridor that, uh, we're talking about, all the way from Chicago to Columbus, to Columbus International Airport, it's a distance of a little over three hundred miles, maybe three hundred and fifteen miles, point to point. Uh, Fort Wayne is right in the middle, uh, Valparaiso's course is very well served, uh, by your proximity to Chicago, on the western end of the corridor. A projected ridership on, uh, this corridor is about two million, it's started, it's been growing, uh, pretty significantly till the year twenty thirty, up to about two point seven million. Uh, next slide. Thank you. Uh, we always, uh, especially when we're just with our partners in the pipeline, we always take the time to show that a lot of what has been done in the past really provided the, um, the basis for what we're doing with the corridor now. Uh, a lot of what we're doing rose out of a study that was done by, uh, the state of Ohio, back in the mid two thousands, it's called the Ohio Hub Plan. And you can see the line moving from Columbus, uh, to Chicago, through Fort Wayne, and that was envisioned as a, uh, as a high-speed line. It's on the track of the Pennsylvania Railroad, which, as you know, goes right through York County. Uh, why Chicago, why Columbus? Well, Chicago, you know why Chicago, that doesn't, uh, you certainly don't need me to tell you why you need that. That is the, uh, for the entire Midwestern economy. As far as Columbus, we know that Columbus is the largest city in the Midwest, certainly the largest city in, uh, this part of the country that is not served by any form of rail whatsoever. So Chicago, Columbus certainly makes sense, uh, to the folks on the eastern end of it. One of the reasons that we think that this corridor makes all the sense is that we can piggyback on improvements that are currently being made to that corridor, especially up in this part of the state. Uh, you're aware of the Gateway Project that's now underway, those improvements which have started, um, uh, due to certainly increase, uh, the capacity of passenger rail as well as freight rail, and allow for easier connections into Chicago. This corridor is able to take advantage of that, uh, thank you for moving ahead with that slide, because it shows, uh, the part of, uh, the work that's being done from Michigan City, of course, and then on into Gary and up into, uh, Chicago. Now, go ahead. So we're also encouraged that multiple improvements are taking place in this, uh, part of the corridor. We see improvements in Gary, Chicago, International Airport, that are very encouraging, uh, the Indiana Gateway Project, we mentioned, is already coming away. And on the Illinois side of the line, three point two billion dollars in public investment done by Chicago, uh, the city of Illinois, which will also benefit this project, are encouraged. In terms of, uh, metropolitan economies, we'd just like to show this, to indicate to you that, uh, the size of the economy that Chicago, we're trying to connect to, is very, very large. As a national economy, if we compare with, uh, the country of Switzerland, the cities around the Midwest are doing their best to try to connect to Chicago, which, of course, is the hub of this three trillion dollar region, um, uh, going to the next level. Just to show that there's a lot of logic behind, uh, these connections, uh, the corridors from Cincinnati to Indianapolis to Chicago also make a lot of sense. And we think that, uh, those projects are going to proceed in this state, uh, as fast as they can, so we are encouraged to believe that, uh, we should really get busy on our portion pretty quick. To some extent, these are competitive, uh, in a, in a larger sense, of course, in benefit of the state of, uh, it's a benefit. In terms of, uh, uh, country, if we were a customer of the United States of the Midwest, we would be the sixth largest country in the world, and, uh, just another reason why we need to be better served, as some of those countries ahead of us, such as Germany, Japan, India, China, are investing in their rail systems. In the Midwest, as you know, one of the things that's been really well served by is, uh, we have a lot of real estate. We have an excellent, um, road system, but as you know, especially after the winter, we have, we are very dependent on the road, in the one condition to be able to travel back and forth, uh, in space. So to do business better, to connect better across this corridor, the intention is to, uh, create a better, more efficient way of getting us back and forth. These are the strategies. I noticed in today's paper that the speed of one hundred thirty miles an hour was discussed, actually to start with, on this corridor, we expect a speed, an average speed, uh, up to about a hundred and ten miles an hour, average speed of seventy-five miles an hour. In terms of ticket prices from one place to another, actually, your ticket prices here in, uh, Porter County would be, uh, very, uh, very competitive going into Chicago. So fifteen dollars, to be fair, business class, uh, kind of full rooms, Wi-Fi, they're kind of all setting, uh, eighteen dollars, uh, in Chicago, that's each way. And overall, in the corridor, I'd want us to have a thirty-four, six miles. Another way, another way of looking at the benefits of this corridor is to look at the, uh, forty-five hundred companies that are located within the corridor. Chicago certainly, eight headquarters for those companies, Columbus another, uh, another large headquarters city for these companies. So we're very encouraged that these companies also need to get back and forth, uh, no hands in the air. As we study the corridor further, we're not looking just at business opportunities, but looking at the connections between, uh, our institutions. Uh, we have researched this, and we, we note that there are a hundred and forty-one colleges and universities locating within twenty-five miles of rail, uh, so with Valparaiso being one of those, a rail disaster. And, uh, we know that, uh, the, uh, the student population liking the traffic the way they do, and also with universities being a major source of innovation, this is certainly very encouraging to us. Go to the next slide. One of the first institutional partners to come on board, actually Grace College, for some of you may know Grace College, we're, uh, in Lenonale, near Warsaw. And it may be interesting to you that Grace College, with its sixteen hundred students, helped as a supportive partner in this project. They have students located in Pennsylvania and Ohio, who would like to go back and forth, and, uh, they felt that this was important to come on board as a full partner, very early on in this project, and that was very encouraging. Since down the court, we should say that Valparaiso University has come on board as a partner, we're very encouraged by that. And as we look around the country, we see that this is the way that students really like to travel. Uh, one of the entry corridors that we take a look at, uh, not a long road, about eighty-seven miles from Oakland out to Sacramento. It's an Amtrak corridor, and it's, it's heavily crafted, UC Davis is the third largest, uh, uh, third largest institution in the UC system. And on that one stop at Davis, four hundred thousand riders a year use that, uh, use that Amtrak stop. That's very comparable to the five hundred thousand, so they use the entire system from Detroit to Chicago right now, so, uh, if you can ask the one stop, Davis, California, producing a lot of this ridership, the entire corridor, from Detroit to Chicago. We look around, and we've also seen tremendous interest up here in the west part of the United States, regarding, uh, the expansion of the transportation, which we're watching very closely. We know that it, uh, it was much in the news in the spring. And we were very encouraged by Dr. William Lowe, Chancellor of Indiana University Northwest, who, who really got behind this, uh, this expansion, and talked about the economic potential and the, uh, the, the way that this expansion of the new transportation, which would bring more than a hundred point seven million here, in terms of paychecks, into this part of the United States. Go ahead, please. Um, we believe that this corridor can operate at, uh, that's one of the things driving this, uh, Tom, Brad, Paul, I mentioned, that we were challenged very early on in the last administration of the state, uh, come up with a plan that was so-called business, business friendly plan, but also a plan that would make really sense going into this. And right here, we won't try to overwhelm you with numbers, but we just want to show you, this is a snapshot, we look at kind of along the corridor and along the, uh, timeline of this corridor, say, of the year twenty thirty, that, uh, at that point, total revenues of the system are going to be a huge amount of cost of operations, by about forty million in years. If you think of this as a standard presentation, very urgent for directors at that point, uh, it would, it would be a very favorable, um, outlook for the year twenty thirty, for our expansion. And the last set of numbers that we'll show you, and these are not numbers that we generated, but they're generated by the economist and the transportation, which we've discussed. Uh, they do these in a way that the federal railroad industry should assist on, uh, and, uh, you're, you're looking at the putting, uh, numbers along various savings and then various efficiencies in the system. And if you're looking at the overall benefit to cost ratio of one point seven four, which we believe is very beneficial for a, uh, project of this size. As far as cost, yes, there is a cost involved, uh, the total cost of this entire system from Chicago to, uh, to Columbus, uh, went out, uh, to, uh, about one point, uh, two billion dollars altogether. But we look at other, uh, transportation projects... The total cost of this entire system from Chicago to Columbus went out to about one point two billion dollars altogether. But we look at other transportation projects around the Midwest of the sea without a single bridge, thus the high river system, which is going to cost about two point five billion dollars or something. While they seem to be big numbers, they're numbers that we think, I do know that two states really, including federal participation, are at risk. As far as employment impacts over the entire thirty years of the project, we expect about twenty-six thousand eight hundred full-time jobs. Economists talk about person years, and we talk about full-time jobs. But some that represents, when we talk about this in full way, about six plants inside As we wrap up, we just wanted to mention the steps that we're headed for. As Tom mentioned, we're looking at stage, and we're here to encourage you to participate in the Tier One study, this requiring of federal government as a pre-development step. So every corridor that expects to have federal money involved must go through this step. So that is the overall picture. We're having questions in this void. The vision, of course, is Chicago to one of Seattle, less than four hours. Albreza would be three hours and twenty minutes. And to downtown Chicago from here, about thirty-eight minutes. We want this corridor to function better as a region, and we want it to be really a fundamental factor in moving our economy much, much further than we could have done other ways. So at this point, we are prepared, Tom, for a large commission, of course, if you would like. Maybe I missed a part, but what was the monetary support you had before you came to this?
It's our understanding that commissioners were, had made a request for twenty thousand dollars to replace that.
And how much money have you gotten from public, private businesses in the county of Portland to this point?
I was very worried about the fate, and we decided to go ahead and add this case with it. There's nothing to hide.
No hiding, obviously.
The funny you see here is either cash that is now being a special account administered through a community development division, a treasurer. You can see that Mayor Henry believes in this enough that he put up two hundred thousand dollars in cash allocation to our CED funds in Portland. Our incoming commissioners who have been great workers in this state heavily funded eight to double seven years. All three of them, Republicans, voted unanimously to fund fifty thousand dollars to this study. You're looking at a moving target, a very dynamic, volatile tape that keeps growing. But we tell we owe you over that this. And we have currently a series of meetings still planned. This is ongoing. In several weeks, we'll be meeting with Mayor Karen Freeman, Wilson, and Gary. Mayor Joe Plummer in Patias, or some Mayor Joe Plummer, has raised seventy thousand dollars. And that was an amount agreed to in one of the series of mayor meetings that go back to last summer. And likewise, the Porter County Council was straight out of fingers crossed, object set out. And this war comes with ease in pursuing the commissioner's request of coming. But that's, that's your question timely, I guess.
Can I ask you a question? Is the RDA given one hundred and forty thousand?
They have what, one hundred and forty thousand pending, several complex late coming political wars that have to happen. They did get through one of them. They got their funding reallocation through the Senate bill, but we've not been talking about that.
Were the funds from the RDA?
Yes.
And all of that is late coming?
We don't give that to them. They don't, they're not represented anywhere up in the county by coming.
Why does someone have late coming?
I do indeed, because physically that's where they're located. But they are as.
Obviously, some of their money is in Porter County.
Yes, they're in Porter and Lake County.
Three secret places in the area.
They're the last entry.
So it's got a few, the RDA committee's got a few constituents who have been there?
Yes, both we have met now twice, live in person, teleconferences, but go ahead and get set. And they are very supportive. They reiterated two weeks ago that they will stand by this commitment. It's just that they explained some of their matters, but I suspect, I suspect that Lake County, Lake County, different things they thought needed to be kept in house.
So I'll tell you, the Tier One from this area, you need seven hundred thousand seventeen dollars, which you need to correct, and you've got it broken down into groups like what?
The seven hundred, yes. Really represents the Indiana. Okay. If it makes it a little more clear, the four hundred and seven thousand equals four hundred and seven out of that, seven, seven.
To complete the tier one, the next step that the federal government requires before they consider, and we're doing this on existing tracks, correct, here, just?
Mostly here in Indiana, most of it is over in Ohio from that side, there would be some track moving.
But on our track here, if existing tracks, then would be expanded or?
Yes. One of the advantages, one of the many things that have been working for us is that we had, we're near here, it's not a common destination. New Italians in Detroit, Chicago, their corridor is being fine here, which is, you had a constant dialogue, CP is running that, Spirit and that, amazing, um, Barabi is chief of the year. We've got live meetings and teleconferences. These people, they understand clearly that the train volumes that you see in that site would be coming at them at Gary. And what's nice is, as you know, Chicago is a nightmare of steel is for that, the entrance of crowded railroad corridors. We don't have to worry, worry about it, we don't have to deal with it. MDOT's in the book, and it made clear Jeff Frymore will see Chicago as a vegetation project. But the traffic anticipated from MDOT Martin Blue cars coming in at Fort Wayne area.
I have a question. The, you know, I mean, what is the totality of just the environmental study costs associated with that?
A little over two million dollars. Several estimates, but we believe that probably we did, if it was coming in, slightly over two million dollars would do.
More than ten percent, maybe even in Detroit, Chicago, in my understanding, which is going on now, is about three million dollars a project. And most of that cost is for, you know, there.
And in what have you projected as to what monies will be used to actually operate this thing, build it and operate it? Where are those funds coming from?
Build it and operate it are two things. I can tell you that shortly after, when the governor and Mayor Tom and me had that conversation with Governor Pence, there were many issues that had to play at this point. And by the time they were done talking, and we had a dialogue extended over two more conversations, the mayor told us that Governor Pence likes this, and will support this MDOT money, and that was part of the question. I need, it should function every time against one. Capitalization, yes, operating funds, no. This has to be ongoing, self-reforming, cooperating, public infrastructure. The loving condition was, if anyone wants to see what kind of local scale of that, we really need a support for this. So that's, that's construction. Operation is a public climate partnership model, and I would rather originally encourage this.
The construction cost in your act there, in the presentation, you will see that total construction cost for this part of the, a lot of Chicago, Columbus, and Sacramento, we've estimated it being about four million miles. So that's about one point two billion, let's say, between, to that distance. That's very consistent with these kinds of projects where you're transforming an existing freight rail corridor into a corridor that will also be a passenger. So the overall numbers we're comfortable with, we said, seems like a large number, but dividing them on two stages. The operation side, as Tom mentioned, really in all of those, especially in Indiana and Ohio, our state governments are interested in having a system that will stand on their own, that will pay for the cost of operation. There's little interest, say, to use a hand system that is dependent upon state aid for operations. So the challenge we accepted when the last former administration was to come up with a plan, and it was a business plan that we had in front of you, so the operations would be paid for out, but that's the difference between the two figures.
Can you give me some examples of where commuter transportation lines in the United States are not supported with public funds?
I can, this is not a commuter system, so I would hate to compare it to a commuter system.
This is not a commuter system?
It's not a commuter system. It's what you would call an inner-city passenger system. And yes, probably the best example is in the northeast corridor, where trains are operating at speed, and it's a population force to support it, and pretty intense traffic between central Boston and Washington, Philadelphia. When these corridors, the volumes of transport, Amtrak, which operates that service there, operates at, not just at cost, but actually producing revenue that would apply to other revenues of its special services. So that would probably be the best example. Although this would punch in largely for, you know, some of the western parts of the city, as a commuter rail system, because it's a three hundred mile corridor, it's bringing people all the way to Columbus to Chicago, which there is growing demand. That makes this a serious system, that's a framework which you want to change.
And it makes it a little bit front-heavy to answer your question, honestly, because other systems are still in development, like Texas, even more than Texas. A lot of states, they're lying to the public, Texas, and they're one being kind, or they're one being kind, and there are others that are still back there at that DOT, DOT discussion basis, unrealized, but they are all operating on that same, they protect the business plans that they work on that same, that is, a public climate partnership. You did mention without, I wouldn't, without the public subsidy. I understand the thinking, but just remember that we subsidize, I, compared to the subsidies that are just transportation, that is, a rational decision. I think it was very, why you brought that, the international decisions, subsidizing that, into that, is.
Yeah, and that brings me to my segue, is that, as you know, we have, we belong to the regional development, the RDA.
Yes, we do.
Porter County contributes, I believe, is three point five million dollars to your board that I'm playing. And they have four primary, there's four primary purposes that they exist. It's for land-based transportation, the development, right now, the development reasons. Area airport, Lakefront, yeah, Lakefront, no. And you may or may not be aware that currently, with the RDA's assistance, with our RDA monies, or monies that are taken from this company, where the NIKI, Northern Indiana Community Transportation System, is developing a solid quarter. My fear, here, first of all, I'm kind of perplexed as to why the RDA is not here, and kind of perplexed as to why the border is missing, and why does this seem to raise those requests? Because of these, of this legislation that was created to create the RDA, which is very clear in what their, their, here, from all, from new on our behalf, and they're not here. Secondly, is that I have to question whether or not, as you pointed out, that Governor Pence likes the idea. And by the way, just for the record, I like the idea too. I think it's, I think it's going to be expensive, but I like the idea of high-speed rail. But I think that in many ways, that this has certainly potential. And we're, and if we support this tonight, we're actually promoting that potential, compete with that project, with the, with the solid quarter project, or taxes, that we love, or.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Do I have to do the terms, do you want to take it?
I don't think so.
Sure. I just want to start with, I think one of the reasons why economic development, they need to be in mind, because he's in the Midwest, part of the state, is are interested in this project is because they need to be in the development. In Lake County, the connection is not so much with downtown here, where we do have, of course, the regional national movement. But it is to the area airport, area of Chicago National Airport, which we, they, expect to grow in a larger share of the airport. Air business, together with the connection to Columbus, which are, are eastern, air connection, your Chicago national, national business, that offers a lot of help out and I think is what attracts these spaces and wants to be participants in each quarter. So it is, so that, I think perhaps, is one of some of the reasons for regional development in quarters we label a two. As far as competing with the regional transportation or the NIKI system, now, this is supplemental too. Certainly, we think that you've got the option, you are in a convinced position to benefit not only from the recent enhanced NIKI service, but to take advantage of faster services in Chicago. From your perspective here, everybody in the climate, further west of Chicago, is looking for this, this Chicago project, this is a project that takes us, our people, our workers, our laborers, our students, to downtown Chicago. But for the people in Columbus, you know, it, elsewhere around the quarter, it allows us to get back to, to other cities, and also certainly to connect, for, say, Porter County to, to Lino, Ohio, from Lino, Ohio to Albreza, where students are coming in, from Fort Wayne to Columbus and so forth. So it is not acceptable, the Chicago connection is not getting started more rapidly, just four, eight days manage, the economic output, the four hundred five hundred, which show in the university's project. So we think that the corridor runs both ways, it serves populations on the northeast and the western edges of the corridor. But we think that you're in an excellent position to take advantage, not only of the existing system that you have, where, but benefit from the, from the, the answer of those corridors. Well, I, here's the thing, I agree. We've got a lot of agenda with this, to the presentation, and we only have one question for the partners in front of us. We're hoping, anticipating the votes in that corner, maybe.
votes in that forum, maybe the fund, I'm not even doing that myself. I think that's not what I said in front of us, I'm sort of all over what you, and whenever, I, I also am a part of mass transportation, certainly is something that can beneficial many tiers in the world. So it's very costly, long-term costly, and if you're around the world, it's not normally profitable business, see, is that that way, particularly not that way, at all for second hour development, reaching, I'm not sure, I have quite the enthusiasm, the area airport will be generated, of course, one of the things that, say, in ten years, where the local place, you need this, the area airport, take off, a lot of the better, in how many years we see that not happen, including the roots, error, so I'm not sure that that's, I'm not sure that that's necessarily the hope from you, but so I'm going to, I'm going to roll over this stuff.
Unfortunately, we don't have a request question, we just have to present it, but we've been trying to get with you, to hear, to hear your presentation, and what's scheduled for tonight.
This is in support of what we think is a pending request for twenty thousand dollars. For some reason, that, that we've done in multiple ways over several years, and so we think that, I understand, that we're not going to vote on the subject, right, as the vote. We are asking you, we're asking you two, three true questions that we want to, that when we went, for example, talked to one of our many, 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 many meetings, they saw no competition, saw no conflict, and that we were a little disappointed that South Creek said, is not going to turn, because we saw that activity, the system, the Panadol system, and that.
Yeah, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I, I spent, I spent nine years on the Niki board, two years as the board president, and you're saying that Niki has seen no competition here, no problem with this, with this project?
None that they were advised to.
Okay. All right, Tim, can I just, uh, the other question is, uh, Bill, these are CSU tracks, these, these normal tracks, you have basically usage between your main, between, you won't be owning tracks, or anything?
You do not, the system would not own tracks, the arrangement is that for the benefit of the improvements, the improvements expected to be about three million dollars per mile along this corridor owned by, by the company, by the system. So the reason that you'll work out is rights to use the tracks on certain cases with investment in exchange for other improvements, which are not that everyone would.
When you say public climate, are you talking about, you're, you're great with the variables, when you talk about the, you mean, we, we, we?
I'm ready to get to the latter.
You can write a company?
And it's proposed, certainly, M Trac would have the ability to be did on the system as, as it's been laid out, and could very well, so there is no requirement that it be one or the other, but it is set up to be franchiseable, so good that type of, of, of model, the two states would be doing that.
Well, with the presentations, I wanted to, to think of a question or by that, and would you back me?
I just, and just one more simple question.
One more?
According, according to your figures, a ticket from Chicago from Valparaiso, Niki business class, is nineteen dollars per month, so less than thirty-eight dollars round trip, at seven hundred sixty dollars a month for a twenty day, twenty month tour, uh, basically.
These fares, as we're laying them out to you, are subject to the same type of discounts as frequent traveler, frequent user discounts, any other form of transportation. Secondly, these fares are deliberately paid, especially these longer distances, Portland, Columbus, and so forth, we never more than two-thirds of airfare, I assure you, hands-on information, getting to Columbus, Chicago, especially downtown, was a far, far better position, especially if you're not planning a trip along that, it's being, you have to make quick decisions, being ventured by those individuals, places, why does it get far worse sometimes? So, you know, computers need to make these decisions, but we think that this form of transportation, we've been, almost in, is certainly driving to the Chicago market, to the position of a period of time that Chicago is on.
And David's meters would use the software, instead of say, that David was a Republican voter.
You're saying that, that somebody working in Valvol, that lived in Valvol, works in Chicago, wouldn't, wouldn't be interested in using this data?
We love the meters, but purpose and financial basis differ, and Valvol is more than you.
If you have a job in Lima, we'll try.
Where's your, the rail?
Okay, well, thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming, appreciate the presentation for a couple of months discussed, and I'm sure we'll have some questions to, to, to get to.
I'd love to have a picture of him, if you find that, that twenty thousand difficult one, to understand what sort of answer that can offer to this.
Thank you so much. Okay, and then, any other matters for the company? We've got some scouts with us here. You guys came just to watch the show, or?
You, you Virgil, ask.
Which, fact, true, or you guys, here tonight, twenty-three? Where's that office? Can't wait, could use strength. That is appreciated.
Thank you.
Anything sign with you?
To verify you were here?
Can, can you sign her attendance?
Sure.
Okay, I'm just, real briefly here, I guess we're going to hold this end of our spot. And we're brought to our, for the, for the, for the night, that, that we are six months behind, including today, to our insurance team, we have some providers that are upset with the count, other, may I call on you, are you?
It came to my attention today.
It came to your attention today that it is going to be for the Board of Commissioners, to their consent?
Going, it came to my attention today, yes. I'm sorry, I was out with fair notes, getting cast, right, tomorrow, it came to my attention.
Right, my calendar.
It did not come through my authority or to my office, so it's a little bizarre. I will be heading to it immediately, I'm going to show cast tomorrow, and it's okay with you when I'm done showing cast tomorrow.
So we'll get those paid up and everything we find?
I have no idea, it came to my attention today.
We're, we're sixteen, we have to be sixteen.
Here's what I'd like, if you could, Bob, get with, with Michelle here, let her know what's going on, and Vicki, and then they can shoot something out to us, letting us know we're out.
Absolutely, absolutely. I guess it came to my protection in a memo form today, sitting on my desk.
There is about one point three million that have already been integrated in the management, but you have to be careful, that's one option.
Give us, give us a suggestion, get out to us right away, thank you. Want to do a turn? Is that in all favor?